Oh.
Recording in progress.
Oh, Armie? What did you?
Are we recording?
Armie?
Oh, yeah.
Ben Chumbar?
That's me. Thank you.
Excuse me, folks, we're gonna get, we're gonna, we're gonna come back into order. Okay, um, we have a, we have a temporary solution for our online guests who would like to speak. So, at this point, Natalie, if you could have them introduce their name and address for the record, and welcome to the planning commission.
All right, and I apologize, I missed your name when you called me, but iPhone, if you could please state your name and address for the record, you are speaking with the public in the commission right now.
Natalie, way to find a workaround, we've all been there in this virtual environment, so thank you. My name is Tiffany Chekitz, I live at 6310 Steeplechase Lane, and I'm directly impacted and backed up to the proposed Pulte development. First of all, I want to say thank you for taking time to listen to all of us that have concerns or some feedback. Um, I heard a lot of things tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Holgland's opinion, I just do want to state for the record that he is one of the main beneficiaries of selling this property, is he, I think that he owns three out of five of the parcels that are being sold, so I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that and takes that into consideration as he gives his feedback. I, I am concerned, I, I back right up to Lupine, so I'm adjacent off of Lupine and would back up to the 18 home sites off of there. My current lot width is right around 80 feet wide. Lennar has home sites that are 75 feet wide with 60-foot wide homes that go on those home sites, so by reducing that minimum width, that, that will impact my value of my home, I do believe in an adverse way. So, I, I am concerned about that and would like that to be taken into consideration. I'm in the industry, I understand affordability, and that it is a challenge. I'm not opposed to the townhomes, I do have concerns though, I think that it was mentioned that it was 3.9 for the absorption rate, where it's really 2.8 in Tavera, so I do have concerns over that for the townhomes and then the single-family lot widths, so I would appreciate that to be taken into consideration as well. Um, and that's, that's my feedback. Thank you for taking the time to listen to it.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna hang up now, I'm not trying to be rude, thank you.
All good, Natalie, thank you.
All right, so next we have Ginger Anzalone's iPhone, if you could please give me a call at 763-258-4272. Again, that's 763-258-4272, I did put it in the chat as well, to everyone, so hopefully that is visible. Hello, this is Natalie.
Hi Natalie, this is Ginger Anzalone.
Great, can you please state your address for the record?
Yes, I can. My address is 340 Bergamot Drive, so I am a Wild Meadows resident across the street, directly across the street from this proposed development. Um, the issues that I wanted to kind of state forward, one of which was iterated on this last caller, there is a vested interest in the gentleman that just spoke as to this development being done, and I do appreciate his position on that, but I also do feel that that does need to be echoed, that people realize that there is a very big vested interest in this position being pushed forward. Um, the issues that will affect us directly, I can tell you, as a resident across the street, first and foremost is traffic. Um, I know that there is a 2040 plan that does discuss the whole potential absorption rate of traffic and increases that will occur at the 101 Hackmore Junction, however, there is no outlet really from this potential neighborhood of 129 units, when you combine the townhomes and the single-family homes, falling onto 101 outside of connecting into Steeplechase at the top and coming out of Ravinia. The potential is that you connect into Steeplechase on one of two directions, either on Goldenrod or going further up north and popping out, and then you're dumping onto Hackmore. As we have seen as a development, anybody who's been in our development, we are a novel creation, we don't have curves, gutters, sidewalks, or any safety issues, you know, provided for people to, to walk through our neighborhood, so when traffic cuts through, which we've had a very large influx on from the Lennar development in and of itself, Ravinia, when that traffic light has any sort of issues, regardless of any construction or improvements to it, we become a very dedicated cut-through, not to mention that what's being built on 116 will come down Hackmore, and when things back up a little bit, they plop down, they cut through Bergamot, hop out of Primrose onto 101. This is going to substantially increase that cut-through, and if you're dropping Goldenrod on to Hackmore, if you can't get across to make a left-hand turn, you're forcing that traffic to move to the right, which will then push an influx through us or up Steeplechase. That is an issue, that is an issue that needs to be addressed. Secondly, the trees along the street of Hackmore, albeit seem to be quite mature trees, are probably past their growth. My questions for the developer and the city, if these trees that are designated as preserved, especially along the white picket fence area that seems to be green on the, on the slide that was put up, what is the plan if those trees are not viable? Because truly, if you look at those trees now, they're not in the most healthy condition, and from us looking on, you can see where they are struggling, and through all the reparations on the road and the construction that are around, is there a Plan 1 that will address replacing those if they do fail, because they were part of the preservation plan? If they are replaced, what size of the replacement? Because if you look at our development, we are built up, so any tree outside of a mature-sized tree does nothing to help screen from a noise barrier or a visual barrier to the surrounding neighborhood, and the density is not there. It only works maybe at street level, and again, at best, those trees are struggling. But lastly, my question is, we are a very novel stormwater drain system, we do not have sewers and gutters that run in a normal development. We work through the meadows with a, an environmental stormwater drain system. My question is, what is the plan there as well for the displacement of all the water due to the impervious structure that will now be present through these massive townhome structures and single-family homes to accommodate any water runoff? My question about that is because we have had in the past, since Ravinia was developed, some issues along right at the Hackmore 101 border caused flooding and backup, I don't know, some of you may remember that there was a flooding issue at that intersection a number of years ago. That pushed water back into the meadows, and we do have a drown-out now of some of the trees that sit on the corner. So these are three major issues that come with such a dense development, and lastly, I, I will be honest, looking at townhomes is not going to be a great thing, and when I look at my property value, as the lady from Ravinia just stated, I do have a major concern at what you're doing to supporting property values in the neighboring areas. So, thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to hang up now, thank you for speaking. All right, next we have Stanislav Manchik, if you could please give me a call at 763-258-4272, again, it's also in the chat. Oh, thank you. Hello, this is Natalie.
Hi Natalie.
Whoa, can you, uh, please?
Yeah, I'm doing it right now.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no worries. Hey, my name is Stanislav Manchik, for short, 6450 Larkspur Lane, Corcoran. So, I just want to thank the Chair and also Commissioner Lattimer for actually having some backbone and some backstatements about things that are being passed, because sometimes I feel like our city has gone to yes people and just approve everything. The main issue that I have with this is, you know, with the commissioner that spoke, forgot the fellow's name, the one that's in the black on the right side, last meeting in November about preserving Corcoran and making sure that the lots are larger and the vision and the mission of Corcoran stay, and now completely changed its tune, just want to make that known and stated from previous meetings, but this corner of the four cities has always been, you know, the other three corners, larger lots, bigger homes, and with Pulte preaching about preserving trees and also giving the city close to a half a million of dollars, which I understand will help with fixing Hackmore since it's filled with potholes and craters in the middle of the street that haven't been filled, it will cause a lot of traffic, but not only traffic, but they speak about affordability, I don't think a half a million dollar townhome is affordable for a single parent as they mentioned in their presentation. The other thing is too, is right now with how fast they're slapping these units up and putting them together, I know for a fact that there's going to be some class action lawsuits coming against Pulte in the development of 101 County Road 10, because the master bedrooms above the garages, which is a similar design to this, is 46 degrees in the wintertime due to lack of insulation and building design. So with that being said, with, the traffic is one thing, but the other thing is preserving Corcoran with the vision and the mission statement of it, and having larger lots, homes, and preserving its natural existence, as the Chair said, it, the townhomes do not make sense on this corner and don't fit with the rest of the corners, the other three corners in retrospect with it. So, that's it, thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, I'm going to disconnect the call. All right, next we have another iPhone raising their hand, again, 763-258-4272. Hello, this is Natalie.
Hi Natalie, um, I'm a phone user calling you on.
Oh, could you make sure you're speaking as close to your phone as possible, it's a little hard to hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? Is it better?
That's better, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Nara, I live in 6462 Larkspur Lane, Corcoran. Thank you for taking the call and listening to the concerns from the neighbors. I completely agree with the, the recent caller that, you know, we need to preserve the natural existence. We bought this home in Larkspur Lane four, five years ago, knowing that this neighborhood is approved for single-family homes, and, you know, and they all fit in in terms of, you know, how they look and feel, you know, around the neighborhood. Now with these townhomes, and, you know, and increase in the home density, I'm really worried about kids' safety, all the knock-on traffic from these townhomes will pass through in front of my home, and, you know, with the kids coming in and going and playing outside, I'm concerned about their safety, and also the property value, we can literally look at the townhomes if I stand in front of the house, this is not what we expected when we bought the home five years ago, four years ago. So we thought that, you know, this neighborhood is only approved for single-family homes, and that's what will be, you know, built, if there is any extension, and I'm also worried about the noise and, you know, other pollution that, you know, with all this increased traffic. Thank you.
Um, just, I just want to make sure that we have your comments for the record, because it was just really hard to hear you. So, your concerns were, the, that you were under the impression it was going to be a single-family zone, and your concerns about safety, traffic, and noise and pollution, was there anything else I missed?
Um, you've got all the main points, thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, so I believe that was our last speaker, one last chance for those online, raise your hand now, if you'd like to participate in the public hearing. And at this time, there are no further hands, oh, Sunny is trying to talk, it looks like. Uh, Sunny, if you were trying to raise your hand, please give me a call at 763-258-4272. Again, 763-258-4272. I'll give you a couple seconds here, I wasn't sure if that was intentional or not. Okay, so I'm going to assume at this point that you, Sunny, did not mean to raise your hand, or try to unmute yourself, so we're gonna go ahead and proceed, feel free to message me if that is not the case. And I do not have a message or anything from him, so. No further hands raised.
All right, um, well, last call?
Well, I don't like speaking in front of groups, but anyway, I'm, I'm Nancy Abramson. Can I just sit right in the microphone?
No, no, that's fine, just your name and...
We have to do minutes later, so we do need it on the microphone.
Okay, um, I'm Nancy Abramson, and I'm at 160 Bergamot Drive, I'm in the Wild Meadows neighborhood as well, and I do have concerns about the safety and the traffic, and where they're putting that road coming out of this development. Um, I also have concerns that, just what almost everyone almost calls said, was that why could this not, I don't think we'd have so much of an issue if they were all single-family homes, but 85 townhomes is a, is a big negative, and especially when you're in the neighborhoods that surround this area, and especially our neighborhood, it's going to affect our property values, and so, um, I guess that's what we're all concerned about, because several of us met this morning and said, this is not good, why do they have to have these, I know it works out for you guys, for, you know, you know, what the kind of profit margins you're looking for, but, um, it doesn't, it just doesn't bode well for this area to have that many townhomes in that area, 85, compared to, compared to what you're putting in a single-family homes. And also, so you're showing us on, on your little presentation, what these townhomes are gonna look like, but just down the street on Hackmore, you've built a townhome, neighborhood, community, I'm very, it's where they're doing the landwork as a matter of fact, I forget the name, is it Glen something?
Greenway Crossing.
Oh, Greenway Crossing. That neighborhood does not look very good, that, if that's the type of product that you are thinking of putting as townhomes in this area, that's a very negative for all of us, and it's, and it does affect our property values. As I said, I don't think all of, any of us are, are completely against any kind of single-family homes across, across from us or in that area, but, um, but to have that kind of density with townhomes, yeah, it's gonna affect safety, it's gonna affect the traffic, it's going to affect the, um, the stormwater runoff. As a matter of fact, I think we were talking this morning that they originally, when they were doing Ravinia, they had called, because we have the Minnesota Land Trust that takes care of our neighborhood with all of our retention ponds, and they had called the person at the Minnesota Land Trust and asked if they could tie in the stormwater system to one of our holding ponds, one of our storm runoff ponds. Obviously, there's an issue, and, and we're kind of concerned what they are going to do with this water runoff, and I know Ginger mentioned it as well, that, um, they have a culvert, and they're, and, and we're worried about what's gonna happen, because behind our lots, the group of us that are right, that butt are, that butt right up to this across the street, um, that has been wet there all the time, so, you know, you're saying that, that you're gonna rectify that somehow, you know, I guess we, we feel like we would need a better plan or, or more of a statement from you as to what, how you're gonna take care of that. And, and really, I guess, um, yeah, I, it's very upsetting to think that, you know, that something can be put in with all those townhomes in this area where we are, and so many of them, 85. It is disturbing to us, and just all the ramifications and all the problems that it will cause, so, um, and, and actually, you talk about the trees that you are gonna put in, or you're gonna preserve, well, you did nothing in the neighborhood that's just down the street where they're doing the landwork on Hackmore, um, and there's, there's, you have nothing along there, so I guess if we're looking at what you've previously done, it's hard for us to believe that this is gonna be a better, a better, you know, option for you, so. Sorry if I sound nervous, because I don't normally talk in front of groups, but I thought I better speak up. So anyway, that's it.
Great, thank you. You did great.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Anyone else online? Going once?
Commissioner Shulak, are you trying to speak? If you are, can you give me a call at 763-258-4272? Commissioner Shulak?
Yes, it's me.
All right, go ahead and state your name and address as a member of the public.
Uh, my name is Jim Shulak, I'm at 20475 County Road 10 in Corcoran, and I'm calling in as a private citizen this evening. My comment is that this is just the same book and a different chapter with different pretty pictures. A developer comes into town and sees that we have a five-gallon bucket, but they're carrying a suitcase filled, filled with 10 gallons full of stuff, and they say, here's, here's what we're gonna do for you, we're gonna give you this, and we're gonna do this, and that, and oh, look, a shiny object, we're gonna save your trees, you won't even know we're there. We're gonna be very, very quiet, at least until the, the construction starts. It is not the responsibility of the city of Corcoran to help you fix your 10 gallons of stuff in our five-gallon bucket. And when all is said and done, we know from experience that you'll set up further down the road looking for another community, looking for another five-gallon bucket. I'm, I'm just frustrated beyond words that this, this type of horse trading or, or negotiating for PUDs and all this other stuff is even a lot to happen. Amen.
All right, is that your final comment?
Is that your final comment?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much.
Kim, are you feeling better?
A little bit, day by day, thank you.
All right, we'll see you next month.
We do have another hand raised online, Steve Barts, Steve, if you could give me a call, 763-258-4272. Steve?
Yes.
Could you please mute your, uh, thank you so much, go ahead and state your name and, yes, thank you, could you state your full name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Steve Barts, I live at 130 Bergamot Drive, uh, I am directly basically where the new road would come out onto Hackmore, our house is straight up from that, so as I look out my back window here, I can see the, the beautiful barn right now. I guess I kind of sit with others that we realize there's gotta be progress, I mean, that's life, uh, we are concerned just about this, the density aspect of it all, the number of townhomes that are going in, combined with the way I understand it, and I'm an expert at this, but this request to, um, make the standard single-family home plot smaller, so we're, in my mind, we're, we're trying to jam as many people as humanly possible into this space, and I get it, that was at a school district is, is what a lot of people want, so I, I fully understand that, but with the new construction going on, on, on County Road 30 here, as I'm heading into Plymouth, all the new homes on the corner in Plymouth, this doesn't seem like it quite fits, right? It's a kind of a beautiful corner, and, and as you were stating earlier, right, this is gonna be one thorough way into your city, this is the first thing people are going to see. Well, what I'm kind of concerned about now, if I look across 101, I see those nice new homes that are built, but I see probably half of those homes have sliding glass doors sitting there with a big wood plank underneath it, where they didn't finish construction of, say, a deck, so that's kind of the view you're gonna have here in these, in these homes looking out my back window, you're gonna have very, very thin lots with homes stamped almost to the edge of, of each one of those pieces of property, um, and that's gonna be our view, and I hope there's some consideration into not allowing what is happening in Plymouth over here, where, you know, you, you can put in a sliding glass door and say, someday I'll put in a deck, and maybe they do, maybe they don't, if that's, that's truly kind of the gateway into your city, it's probably not a really good look for people to look to the right and see these unfinished back yards. So, hopefully there's some more consideration into just the number of people that we're trying to force into this small space, it's gonna go on to a corner that we all know is gonna pick up in, in, um, in traffic as the years go on, there's just no way to stop that. And that road, as it comes out right there, that's gonna be the main way out, there's not a lot of distance, it's like 650 feet to that, to the stoplight. Well, right now in the morning, it's already busy, there's already cars backed up, I can look out my back window here, and now we're gonna put all those people there, it's gonna be hard to get out there in that one spot, so I'm, I'm hoping they're thinking about truly how people get out in the morning to go to work with kids heading to school, um, and what that's gonna do to put that many people in that space. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, I'm going to end the call now. All right, so we don't have any further hands raised online at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, all right, uh, at this point then, um, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing, I'll make that motion, for a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, this public hearing is now closed. Ooh, um, all right, uh, commission discussion recommendations, obviously, I'm sure we all have lots of opinions and thoughts, we've heard a lot of various opinions and thoughts, you know I'm ready for this, but please, anybody that would like to start, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Lattimer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think that this commission should recommend denial of this application, for a planned unit development, a developer is essentially asking the city to provide quote flexibility to depart from the city's code, from the city code's requirements in exchange for benefits conferred upon the city. I think that that flexibility has been abused, and really, it's more than flexibility, it's throwing away the certainty afforded by our laws. People take comfort in, and this is evidenced by the callers and the letters that the city received, in knowing that the law is certain that, for example, a single-family zoning district is what it says it is, and it will remain that way. Instead, the PUD has given more than flexibility from or relaxation of ordinances, it has completely eviscerated them, so that they become meaningless, and all of a sudden, the certainty of the law is gone. The PUD has been used as a mechanism to ask for a lot, and essentially rewrite the laws for the benefit of a developer, for which very little is given in return. This mechanism is ideally useful and could serve an important purpose, but unfortunately, I think that the flexibility slash benefits analysis has resulted in the city being taken advantage of. This case is no different, the applicant has requested extensive rewrites of the code for themselves. Briefly, they want us to remove the garage requirements and lot size requirements. Briefly, they want us to remove the garage requirements and lot size requirements. They also want to install townhomes where, at present, they cannot be built. The current zoning is RSF one, which is single-family. This is more than simple flexibility. In exchange, the applicant promises that the city will receive the following benefits. And again, I'll give you the nickel version because I wanna be mindful of time. On the slide, I saw a couple of bullet points. Number one, preserve wetlands. Okay, well, isn't that already a legal duty? Preserve or plant more buffers. Can someone articulate for me how this is a benefit to the city? They wanna plant twelve trees. Okay. Is that really the kind of deal that Corcoran needs? Twelve trees for removing the certainty of our laws. Provide a private park. Now, let me ask you, how is a private park a benefit to the city? Hey, I'm a resident here. What does a private park do for me? This is a benefit for the builder's customers and the builder's customers alone. This shouldn't even be on their slide. Another purported benefit is accommodation of the Hackamore Road on, on-road trail within the project rather than within the right-of-way. Can, can someone explain what this means? I mean, do I understand correctly that the trail tucked further back in, into the development away from Hackamore is some kind of a benefit to the city? I think if you have the scales out and weigh the developers asks against what they are claiming are benefits to the city, it's a bad trade, and in fact, it's a joke. This is the kind of trade that my kid would regret if they made the deal with a classmate. The city would be giving a huge amount of deference to the developer and carving out huge exceptions for them in exchange for, when you really think about it, not much of anything. What residents have written in and called about are also my concerns. I think that this application should be denied. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Landerman?
May I go? Please, Chair.
You may certainly.
Can I begin with two questions for clarification? One is for the city. My understanding is that the, anything that is developed on this site, save a place of worship or a school, has to meet the residential density requirement of at least three. Is that correct?
So, the density is, that, that's the goal that we're looking for. Really, what we're looking for at the end of the day is that the overall density in the area is three acres. So if, if one plat comes in that's a little under three acres, it might fit within the context of still making that average of three acres at the end of the day. But, I mean, ideally, that's what we'd like to see on a plat, just to make the numbers nice and easy, but I believe there's enough density in the area that we're still meeting that three acre average.
Three per unit.
Three units per acre.
Three units per acre. No, I know, it's already, I'm with ya. I was tracking.
Thank you for correcting me. Yes, that is what I meant.
So, to clarify, each individual parcel does not have to, or each individual PUD does not have to meet that minimum of three?
Yeah, but you, you still wanna close though, so you can get that to the average at the end of the day. Yes.
Okay. And so, in that area, you said we're already meeting, we, we are on track to meet that density requirement for this area. So, I did the math, and I, I mean, it's at a hundred and twenty-nine residential units right now, but we, and that's at three nine is the density then of this place. So we could potentially, even to reach still three in this area, lose thirty units and drop down as low as ninety-eight. If anyone wants to check my math, feel free. But then also, I wanted to ask the landowners, 'cause I know Mr. and Mrs. Hogland are here, but then I believe maybe somebody else as well, you guys want to sell. Right? Okay. So I guess the reason I ask, just for it to be stated, is that I think what we're attempting to do here is to find that there is a landowner who wants to sell, and then there is a developer who wants to come in, and we're trying to bridge that in a way that meets...
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Earlier, it was referenced that I supposedly owned three properties. The reason Brad and Jackie had been at nineteen two two zero for twenty-two years, the reason I had to purchase a couple neighboring homes was to fend off a large national developer called Lenora, who was going to buy those and box us in. So in theory, I've saved that land for the city for a long time by paying property taxes and what have you to fend off the developer.
And then I just had another question, more specific and maybe to Polte. As I was thinking about, is it possible, hearing some of the concerns about the density, it, would it be possible to lower the density, trying to look specifically, again, recognizing that we're in a position and trying to find a bridge? Is the reason why the townhome block that's on the southwest corner, that's one nineteen to one twenty-nine, would not work as single-family homes? Is it because of the location to the wetland? I guess, I don't know if the slide is even possible to put up, sorry.
Give me one second.
That block that's, it, it's the one where we were talking about the setback from the Hackamore Road specifically? And maybe that's not a question that can be answered, but just...
Was that a question for staff or the applicant?
Either one. Can anyone speak to, is there, is it, is there not enough area for that specific area to be single-family homes?
Are you referencing these units here?
Yes, yep.
So this is the townhomes that are southwesterly?
Yeah, the only ones that are exterior, essentially.
The two buildings there is what you're speaking of?
Yeah.
Well, the reason why those were townhomes is because across the street are townhomes, and oftentimes, you try to bulk them together that way.
Okay, okay. That makes sense, but I didn't think of that. I mean, I appreciate the response. What was my other question? And then I guess I, my other comment that I had was the same, is the, some of the benefits being listed are things that are required in terms of preserving the wetland and contributing to the development of the road. Staff, I appreciate that you touched on that, that anything that goes in on this parcel would be a part of the improvement to the Hackamore Road. And so just making sure that it isn't specific to this particular applicant. That's what I have for now. I'll join in if I have more.
Great, thank you.
And I might, fairly quick, 'cause I, in general, wanna say I agree with Commissioner Landerman. I, you know, reading over the comments, all the letters that came, I mean, a lot of, I, I don't know, it ended up being twenty-plus letters probably came in, emails that came in, all really challenging this, that people built homes, bought homes, looking at our, our, our zoning maps and seeing that, what this was supposed to be, and that, that makes your decisions, and then we just change it, and I, and that just doesn't, some doesn't, I haven't been doing this, Alan, it just doesn't seem right. And so, you know, we have, we have these maps, and we're, we're, we're saying, this is, this is what we're trying to stick to. And I know this is in the MUSA, so there's, there's some extra restrictions here, but this was already zoned as, as, as residential, single-family residential, and I just think that should be the end of the, of the discussion, as far as I'm concerned. I don't see why, unless a whole bunch of other residents were, like, excited about this, I don't see why we would want, why we would allow, allow this when we already had made the decision in advance. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Well, you know, to answer just that general question, th, this is a dilemma, and, and I'll, I'll give recognition to Paul for, if, if, if anybody read the narrative, he, he points out the dilemma of this whole, of this whole thing. And it's not necessarily caused by the city. It's not caused by the staff. It's not caused by the developer. It's caused by the Met Council. And the Met Council needs to just, they need to concentrate on putting pipe in the ground for sewer. That's what they were, that's what they were designed to do when they first originated, and, and now they're in every aspect of our life. And, and this city cannot, cannot develop this site. We couldn't develop Cook Lake Highlands based upon the way we zoned it because we are living by a standard of three to five homes per acre, pure and simple. And, 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 and so, you know, it would be ingenuous to say that the developer's just trying to stuff this thing to make more money. The fact of the matter is, is that there's a give and take here. Now, Mr. Howard, you, I was here the night you gave your presentation in, in November, and somebody had asked you, you know, can you develop this according to the zoning? And you did, in fact, in public, say yes. You could do it under the current zoning, single-family residential. But as part of that, we would lose wetlands, and they would have to cut down some trees because you gotta, you're gonna have to put, you know, X number of s, single-family homes on eighty-five foot, or eighty-foot lot, wide lots. And, and if they stuck to that, I guarantee you, the arguments here tonight wouldn't be about traffic. It'd be about the lack of, they filled in the wetlands, they cut down all the trees, and we all know, we all have seen that, we've all had to deal with it. That's what we'd all be arguing about to know, tonight. Why do we have a tree preservation program? And this PUD thing, which is the bane of my frustrations for, you know, everything that we've been doing here since we got sewer and water, is, is, is really a good avenue for the developers, you know? Because they're using this, and it's not just Polte. Every developer has used it against the city. That's why every development has been a PUD, because you can't develop according to the zoning without getting that three to five acres per unit. So, I, I, you know, until the city wants to just either say to the Met Council, I'm sorry, God made this particular thirty-eight acres of, of land, blessed it with nature and wat, wetlands, and you know what? We want it to keep that, and we want it to be the cornerstone of the entrance to our city, and by gosh, if that has to be eighty-foot wide lots, then that's what it's gonna be. And if it doesn't come up to that three to five, too bad. But I don't know that the city, we have not, we have not crossed that barrier yet. So, in principle, I think everybody here is right, in the sense that, you know, we, we saw it firsthand when, when the church came. Your neighborhood sees it with Tavara, you know? Everybody's like, how, how do you get a low-density, single-family residential designation, but yet we loaded up, how many townhomes are down there right on the corner? It's gonna be the first thing you see when you come up one sixteen. Wait till those get built, folks. It's gonna be an eye-opener when you see those things. But it, it doesn't make any sense. And, and if I was somebody who lived in the neighborhoods or in the surrounding properties and I saw that, and everybody might recognize that, yes, it should be developed into single-family. And it is shocking that all of a sudden now, we're faced with having townhomes. So, you either deny it based on the principle, or you approve it based upon the history. And this city has a history of setting this stuff in precedence. And, and I can't in good conscience not recognize that. One more option? You can deny it based on the law. Okay.
There was just one, one more option that wasn't mentioned.
Okay. And, and of course, if we recommend to deny, again, we don't have the power to deny or approve, we just make a recommendation. Now, the history of this thing, Mr. Hogland has every right to sell this and to profit from it. That's the American way. The community and, and this commission and the city council, I think correctly, denied Eagle Brook Church. It really was just the wrong thing. I mean, that just, that was over and above what was really deemed to be acceptable. Now, you look at this, did they meet the three to five acres? Yes, they do. What's the density of, of Ravenia? Three to five acres.
Units per acre.
Three to five units per acre. The same density, folks. I don't care how you wanna cut it up. It's the same thing. To our friends to the south, you guys live in a blessed neighborhood, and I'd be amazed if in my lifetime you ever saw that thing ever developed again under, under what's happening both at the state legislature with zoning restrictions, as well as the Met Council. So consider yourselves lucky that, that you live in such a nice area, regardless of what the values are. You truly are unique. That'll never be accepted here, and I don't think the city is ever going to be in a position where, you know, we can, we can grant your every wish to a lifestyle that you live in that is somehow going to transfer itself into here. You know, apologize. It's, it's gonna be more dense, you're gonna see it regardless of what we build, or what, whoever builds there. So, I'm not, I'm not gonna be persuaded by, by some of that. The traffic, of course, is an issue, I think. There's always gonna be legitimate concerns. This thing with Hackamore Road is, I think, long overdue. I did wanna ask Mr. Hogland one question. You mentioned forty-seven. Is that gonna be a four-lane road or a two-lane road coming to one oh one?
No, so he's gonna, I've heard it's long ago, stay at two.
He's gonna say two. Okay. I just wanted to know if there was gonna be this huge disparity between the east and the west side of one oh one?
Four coming to two.
Okay. All right. Now, I, I, I did want to just get back to just some specific things about the plan. We, as a commission packet, were not given a landscape plan. I, I don't believe. And so my question is, if you could bring up a, at least this thing here, whatever one. I don't see any trees within the separated open spaces, if you will, between the townhomes and the wetlands or the single-family detached residential properties. Is that by design, or did, am I really just looking at?
Should be in the pack, I was trying to find.
Is that the way this is gonna be?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
We've got landscape plan, he's telling me.
I mean, this one technically says proposed trees, saved trees, moved trees. I've got none there.
Well, no, there's proposed trees, and these are, I think, the trees that they're building on the west side.
Right.
So I get that. But it'd be like a, a normal landscape plan, all these single-family homes all have a requirement for a tree, and you don't see a single one there. So I'm just trying to figure out, what is the landscape plan? So, I'm just trying to figure out, what is the landscape plan between the single-family residential and the townhomes? And I don't have a plan that shows anything about the screening that, or the requirement. I mean, you, you can't, just by the fact that you have driveway, you, you have more tarmac than you have blades of grass for all these townhomes in the front yard. That's just the nature of the beast. But you've got a lot of rear land. And so, the report says, well, they'll plant a tree in the front where they can accommodate it, whereas I would think, hey, I don't care, you, you're gonna plant an overstoryed tree for every unit. If you can't fit it in the front, why not put it in the back? Or it'll do some good. Okay, see, now that, that is one we did not get.
Mr. Chair, I'm looking for it in the packet. If I don't find it, it was an error and it should've been the packet.
Now, I looked through it three times, I didn't find it, so, good luck. Um, but anyway, i- is that, is that the, is that a fair representation, Paul, of what you guys are gonna do?
Yes, and this is showing some existing trees.
No, that's quite right. I heard you.
It's showing some existing trees in very light shades and new trees in the dark shades. Um, forgive me, I don't know the plan well, but oftentimes in these landscape plans, there's, there's additional trees that are planted with the building of the homes too, so sometimes there's additional trees placed on the lots that aren't shown here because the locations are chosen by the buyer.
Okay. All right. Um, I, I'm sure that, I'm sure that our professional staff has worked with your professional staff, and if they say you need to plant X number of trees, I'm hoping they're there, but if you folks could just verify, again, you may not be able to plant them in the front yard, but it behooves me as to why we're not loading up. I mean, you know, you know, the developer has shown a sincere, I think, interest in, in trying to put up as much screening as they can for the outside perimeter, but we should also, they should also, and the residents of this future development, if it's approved by the city council, should seek to get as much, as much barrier screening that they can between the single-family and the townhomes. Because it, of course, it looks like a lot of space. It does not look like it would be a difficult thing. So, all right. Um, Paul, I, um, now, I'm not very familiar with these sites because they are privately owned, so, um, while I do like to go out and look at every site that I can, uh, this is one that I just didn't wanna start tramping around forty acres. Um, so, I'm not very familiar with the composition or the existence of the wetland, but you've made comments now to this commission here that you guys have created these wetlands as a benefit. Now, are, are we, are we talking about wetlands that you guys are gonna dig and create, or are they already there actually in existence?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
All the wetlands are there currently.
Okay. But there are some stormwater basins that you guys will have to construct.
Yes.
And, and how do those interact with the existing wetlands? Do they, so, we've heard from a resident who said that you guys, that they wanna put white wa- wastewater from, or stormwater from this side over into the other neighborhood across the road.
Mr. Chair, I think she was talking about Lennar made that request.
Okay.
For Ravinia.
Oh, okay.
We have not approached.
I apologize. I misunderstood.
Um, Minnesota is, um, very robust in our stormwater laws. Um, I've worked across the country, and we've got very good, very strong, um, laws and regulations. We would follow the laws. Typically, how it works is we have stormwater treatment plant, uh, ponds that, um, slow down the water, hold it back, release it at a gradual rate. The rate post-development has to be no more than pre-develop. Oftentimes, we collect the water, it settles in the pond, the pollutants fall to the bottom, and the clean water goes into the wetlands. That's typically how it works. Um, if you want more details, I'm sure our engineer online, if he's still awake, would be happy to say more.
No, let's move on, we still got a busy schedule, so. Um, I'm curious as to why, in this staff report, um, we have talked about monument signs. Um, it was mentioned even in our first item of business. We've talked about it on, um, County Road 116, we've talked about it on County Road 10, we'll be talking about on County Road 30. Was there any discussion about a monument sign at the corner of Brockton Lane or 101 and Hackamore? I didn't see anything in the report dealing with that.
I don't believe that the applicant proposed any signage with the plan.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, we did raise that issue because we heard about that issue from city staff, um, back in the November city council meeting. Um, so, it was referenced in that application. Um, didn't seem to get much traction with the city council, so I think it just faded away. We are open to providing at no cost an outlot, uh, for building a city monument.
Okay. Well, but then equally interesting is that there was no, there was no development signs. Now, you only have the one, the one entrance off of Hackamore.
Yeah.
But, I mean, everybody else seems to wanna put their, their development sign right there at their entrances or multiple entrances, but you guys have chose not to put any.
Mr. Chair, we would come in later with a sign application.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, does this commission want to recommend to the city council that they work with the applicant to install a, a nice entrance sign?
I would like to recommend that they not approve the application at all.
Okay. All right. Um, well, let it be noted that the discussion, from the, um, at least for me, uh, was put out there. Um, okay. Um, now, to get back to that, that issue about developing this as, as it was zoned, do you recall saying that? And, and I'm not gonna hold you to it or, or anything like that, because what I'm, what I'm trying to just get at is, if that were in fact true, do you have any idea how many units you would have to build? I suppose if it's three to five, you know, but you got the calculation that's, that's, of course, uh, dictated by the Met Council, and, and maybe in a good way, I don't have that, that, you know, memorized. Um, I just take it maybe for granted that somebody else is doing that calculation correctly, but, um, what, what would it mean in terms of losing wetlands? And, because with a wetland, to get rid of a wetland, then, don't you have to buy wetland credit somewhere else at a pretty expensive penny?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, um, yes, a lot of decisions would have to be made with a whole new layout to go straight zoning. Uh, wetlands, tree removal, everything would have to be looked at. Obviously, some things are fixed. We have a certain amount of streets that we have to connect to at specific locations, so, some of it is fixed, some it's flexible, but, um, it would be an entirely different site plan.
Okay. All right. Um, I wanna ask you about the traffic study because that's, that is a big issue. So, in our packet, um, under appendix A, it's actually storm model, stormwater modeling guides. Um, but there is, did I, is it in a different one? It actually might be part of the staff. It's actually part of the staff report, I apologize. All right. So, are you familiar with this, Paul? Um, staff, are you, are you familiar? Can you speak to this? 'Cause I just have a couple of general questions.
Mr. Chair, I can speak to generals about the report, but I did not prepare the feasibility study, so if there's.
Okay, so, this was prepared by StanTech, right? Our engineering consultant. Okay. So, in this, on page, there's no page numbers. Uh, but it's under section, uh, 2.4, uh, traffic forecasts. And so, they modeled this thing using some, some published guide, and that's not unreasonable. Um, and they, they look at it specifically to table one, weekday trip generation for proposed project. They break it down into single-family, forty-seven dwelling units, and townhomes, eighty-two dwelling units. And they've got weekday AM peak hour, in and out in total, and PM peak hour, uh, weekday, uh, daily totals. Um, and, not that that is really super, you know, compelling or, or interesting, um, but right below it, the distribution percentages for trips generated by the proposed development are pres- are described below. Uh, fifteen percent to and from the north, and forty-five percent to and from the east on Hackamore. Fifteen percent to and from the south. Twenty percent to and from the west on Hackamore Road. Five percent to and from the north on Golden Ro- Golden Rod Trail and Larkspur Lane. So, what, what all is that really telling me? I mean, forty-five percent to and from the east on Hackamore Road. So, am I to imply that most of the traffic's gonna funnel out the bottom of this thing, or coming in and out is gonna come from 101 and Hackamore from the east?
Mr. Chair, that is correct, though that details the distribution of the daily trips. So, as the city engineer analyzes, single-family and townhomes, uh, generate a certain number of trips, and those, the breakdowns of the streets named there, the north and south and east and west on Hackamore and 101, that's the percentage of those trips that would travel along those roadways. So, forty-five percent would travel east on Hackamore, and then fifteen percent would then travel south, fifteen percent then travel north on Hackam- on County Road 101.
Okay. What I wanna get to is then first find out is five percent to and from the north on Golden Rod Trail and Larkspur Lane. So, this is basically saying five percent of the traffic generated from this development in this makeup is going north through Ravinia.
Correct.
Um, but it, okay, so, but that's north on Larkspur, but it doesn't say, it doesn't specifically say how much is gonna go up Golden Rod, right? 'Cause Larkspur's gonna take it farther north. But if, if five percent is going up Golden Rod to, I don't know, what's that road that Golden Rod comes up to? What is this road right here? Anybody know?
Um.
Whatever.
Well, Steeplechase.
That's Steeplechase? So, it doesn't break that down, but if five percent is total, um, out of a total of one thousand thirty-three trips, it's a weekday total, um, you're looking at fifty, you're looking at, what, fifty cars a day gonna go through those neighborhoods, either to Steeplechase or farther north on Larkspur?
Mr. Chair, may I ask just one question related to the traffic that you brought up?
Yes, please.
The feasibility study, did it take into account the already-approved development in Tavera? Yes, okay.
And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Roman, just to clarify, this traffic study was done based on the concept plan as well, so the numbers, that's why they reflect the concept plan unit numbers.
So, um, one of the, a couple of the things that I was talking to, um, some staff about was, in this plan, it's noted that we got townhomes that are six units in width, and that is actually permitted in our current zoning. Um, there are communities that limit that, uh, to two, or not two, that would be a twin home, but they limit it to three, four, but we currently allow six. Um, as I look at this, it would just be my contention that if, you know, because I think we're seeing it in the development rate across from the 1050. Um, they seem to be building townhome units that are only three and four wide, that are a little bit more attractive in, in, in their entirety than having walls of six units, and then six units, and then six units, divided by a total area of twenty feet between bank of, of properties. Um, so, I don't know, Dean, I would think that maybe that's something that, you know, we could review in the future, uh, for these kinds of, uh, issues. Um, the other thing is, um, that park, where, where is it, where exactly is that? So, the, the Parks and Trail Commission didn't require it, but if you put it in, you're not gonna get any credit for it. And you wanna put that in because apparently the other park in Ravinia is overused?
Mr. Chair.
Or is that capacity? And?
We, we heard that there was some concern, uh, about the capacity of the parks at Ravinia. We put the park in there as an option for the city.
Yeah.
Um, clearly, there hasn't been much interest in it, so, it was our intention to leave that space as open space. However, um, if you'd prefer that we have a tot lot in there in a private park, we'd go that direction. So, we've been very flexible on that issue, we've just been looking for some direction.
Mm-hmm. Well, um, hey, I, you know, I got a dog that loves to play frisbee, make it a, a dog frisbee yard for all I care about. Um, anyway, well, uh, again, knowing that you've done some things that admittedly we have not seen every developer try to stick to, um, especially with regard to tree preservation. Can you, uh, I did wanna ask you, that trail that you're willing to give the city on the north side of Hackamore Road, now, there's quite a few trees along that, um, in one rendering, I saw they were kept, and in another, they're gone. It, what's the, what's the story there?
Mr. Chair, I was wondering if somebody would catch that error. Um, the rendering shows those trees as red, which means removed. They won't be removed. All of the trees along Hackamore should be green. The rendering is, is incorrect.
Okay.
And the trail would be woven through the trees to avoid them. The reason for the trail going off the right-of-way is because there has been a little, um, I guess, disappointment in many cities with, uh, the linear streets that, or trails that just follow the street. Um, and a lot of city councils have liked the idea of trails weaving on and off the right-of-way and, and just having a more interesting walk or bike ride. That's where that came from. Again, we're totally flexible on that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or discussion items?
One last one, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This, there was, at the end of the appendix that you provided, it said that there was draft HOA documents, but I don't think they were included in the packet. There was a note that the ones that are at the end of the street that connect with Tavera would fall under the, or, excuse me, Ravinia, would fall under the Ravinia Homeowners Association. Um, am I, we are then to assume that this entire neighborhood would be governed by an HOA?
Yes. Two HOAs, actually. The townhomes have a higher level of service with the snow and the mow, um, in the exterior of the buildings. So, um, that would be one sub-association, and then there'd be a master association, including both the townhomes and the single-family homes that would take care of any common space, uh, the entrance monument, those sorts of things.
I just have one question because we do touch on the housing affordability, and I am curious because almost every new neighborhood going up, not, not unique or specific to Poltey, has a homeowners' association that's filled with a fee. So, it, does the market generate that? Like, do people really want to live under a homeowners' association?
Overall, yes. It varies quite a bit. Obviously, if you have private amenities like a tot lot, a pool, a pool building, you must have an HOA. must have an HOA. For just an entrance monument, it becomes a little bit different. And some choose to have an HOA and some choose to address it in other ways, deed restrictions, things like that. So there are different ways to deal with maintenance of an entrance monuments. But oftentimes, the homeowners' associations are also taking care of mailbox, bulked areas, things like that. But usually, there's more than just an entrance monument and the mailbox, in which case, the HOA makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Thank you. So are we at decision point?
Um, yeah. I mean, if there's no other further discussion?
May I make a suggestion for moving, I don't know the formal language for approval, but here's the deal. Like, I completely understand, and I would say as well, I think I understand the frustrations of everyone, but also the, like, the effort from Pulte, the desire from the Hoaglands. And I think that this does do, make an attempt at kind of finding a middle ground, a bridge. My one recommendation would be that I feel like in, for, since we don't have to come in exactly at three to five on every single preliminary pad, if there was any way to move forward in reducing it, you know, either take, like, you know, making five or fewer townhomes in a lot, or taking a section of townhomes and turning it into single-family homes so that there's a lower reduction. So we're coming in closer to three than 3.9, then I would be in favor of making a motion to recommend approval.
Well, um, the, as, as the applicant noted, he recognizes our frustration as a commission and as a city council over these PUDs. But again, as required to meet those, those density quotients, it's, at this point, an evil necessity.
But we're at 3.9.
But, but when it comes to the issue of, okay, we're going to apply for a PUD, and with that is inherently, we're going to give you something better that you couldn't get under your current zoning. So in this particular case, I note, um, these buildings are, and I'm not an expert, but I can just tell you, out of, you know, when you looked at the design standards, we have class one, class two, and class three, commercial building materials, right? Class one being the best, class three being that stuff you want on the backside that no one sees. Now, I don't want to overly condemn this, but, you know, we used to think about, and this happened in Ravinia, you know, they came out and said, well, we're going to have hardy board, you know? And then all of a sudden, it was, well, we need to seek, we need to seek some changes, you know, we need to have, you know, a different material. And before you know it, we end up with a bunch of houses with vinyl, about the cheapest material you can find. If you look at, if you looked at the, the, the materials for these things, everything is vinyl, except for the cultured stones, which obviously are not real stones at all. So we didn't get the upgraded materials that, that at least we should have expected maybe, you know, for granting a PUD. There wasn't, you know, again, there wasn't, you know, when you're saying the benefit is we're going to pay for the road, we're going to save with the wetlands, we're going to preserve some trees, those should all be inherently to your benefit and to the benefit of the residents that you hope to sell to. So that shouldn't be something that is, we bargained with you for. But oddly enough, I would think that the benefit would have been, you know what, we got to seek a PUD and we have to use some townhomes to kind of grab some density. Now granted, they got a range of three to five, they went to four. They went the middle of the ground. But maybe the benefit to the city is, yeah, you know what, we'll work towards three, you know? And maybe, let's not make them six wide, maybe, you know, I mean, we didn't force that upon the other development, but that's what they did because I think they think that that's a better, that's just a better atmosphere for three or four units. But, um, but the, when the city council took a look at this thing back in November and, and kind of gave, you know, that whole process of having the preview is designed so that they can get feedback as to how to make this better. Now, we as a commission, I think, all recognize that, you know, we're never going to be able to change this process unless we start standing up and saying, this kind of, this kind of concession, while maybe arguably necessary, should not have happened. And we don't necessarily care for it, you know? So we will, we will, in theory, probably vote this down, recommend denial, but we have precedence. We allowed it in Ravinia, or Tavara, I'm sorry. It does meet the same density as everybody else. They are preserving a lot of wetlands. I could see where you could equally make an argument that this should be, this should be approved. But I think, though, if you're going to approve something like this, you could have maybe just done it in a little, in a way that it's maybe, you know, instead of, you know, maybe fewer townhomes, maybe bigger lots, because we've heard that objection, you know? So that is what I think would have maybe been some of the benefit to the city, is to not have to deal with the issue of, well, it looks like we just did, you know, you just did nothing more than load all this up with as much as you can get. It was noted correctly that this is a rare, this is a unique property in the fact that it is one of very few development properties left in the school district. I don't buy the argument that rich people wouldn't want to live here, you know? So you can't support big houses on this. People wanting to that school district bad enough, they'll, they'll put up with Hackamore and 101, especially if these trees and the, and the wetlands are preserved. So I, I think if, if this was a policy decision not to do this, that should have been made by the city council when they reviewed this thing in November. And by the fact that they allowed the applicant to spend money, to allow the, the, the developer to spend the money to go forward down this thing with this thing, it, it, it kind of, you know, it's really more on their, on their, on their shoes than it is ours. But, um, so.
Maybe, I'm just looking at time, like, maybe we should just put it to the vote, so.
Well, are you guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay. So what's the, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Okay. Now, just to be clear, um, there are a number of resolutions. So are we going to take this lock, stock, and barrel? So the first one is an ordinance amending Title 10. And then there's approving findings of fact for rezoning. And then we have the resolution approving preliminary planned unit development plan for Walcott. And then there is, uh, resolution, that's attached to my name, approving the preliminary plat for Walcott land located at the northwest corner.
So, Mr. Chair, essentially, if the first ordinance doesn't pass, then the rest isn't relevant.
Then there's no reason, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, and that would be the ordinance amending Titles 10?
Correct.
Okay. All right. There is a second, you seconded it, correct?
I did, yeah.
All right. All those in favor of recommending denial of the ordinance amending Title 10, the city code, to classify certain land located in northwest corner Hackamore? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. And I want to put that vote in there just because I think there's merit to this. I think it can be done better. And we'll let the city council vote. Thank you, everybody, for that.
Thank you for considering it.
Okay. All right. Does anybody need a break? Are we good to go?
Mr. Chair, I would say let's, I know there are a number of people here for the next issue, so in, in respect for them and their time, I would say let's do at least the next issue.
Okay.
On the agenda.
Sorry, but I just got to get my desk cleared.
Oh, sorry, that's my desk.
All right. Let us move on then to, and hopefully, this is what you've all been patiently waiting Item 6C, public hearing, preliminary plat in variance for Karanimi Meadows at 23185 County Road 10. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the interest of time, I'll try to keep it brief.
Yes, please.
So just let me know if I miss anything with questions. Uh, so this is located off of County Road 19 and County Road 10. Land is guided rural ag residential and zoned rural residential with shoreline, wetland, and flood plain overlays on the site. It has 13 existing development rights and is proposing to use nine of them with four of them remaining. So that, they're proposing to use nine development rights for nine rural residential lots. The one outlot would retain the four development rights. And the variance request is for a smaller lot depth or a single lot one. So with the site plan here, the access comes off of County Road 10, moves south, and all nine lots are off of that single access. Lot 10 on the west is, will be renamed Outlot A if it were to move forward consistent with plating requirements and would retain the four development rights. The applicant did provide a ghost plat for that, just indicating that you could position four lots on the site, but the layout could change upon a preliminary plat for that portion of the lot. So with that single access off of County Road 10, they would be required by the county to provide a fifty-foot half right-of-way on County Road 10 and a right turn lane to be completed with this development. And the county did note that a left turn lane would be required of any development to add more lots to that long cul-de-sac, because the property to the east abuts that long cul-de-sac road for a very great distance. So an access would likely come off of that road and add more units onto that road, which would then trigger additional improvements to County Road 10. All lots are, this is outside of the musa, so all of the lots are served with well and septic, no public utilities. And because there are shoreline, wetland, and flood plain on the site, all kind of intermingled together, there are some minor revisions that have, need to happen as part of that to meet conditions for things such as wetland setbacks. Shoreline boundary is bounded by the flood plain in this case, and so making sure they meet the setbacks for that as additional flood plain information is needed to determine the extent of that flood plain, which would then determine the boundary of the shoreline. So it's kind of an interplay between all three of those in this case. One of the main pieces for this is the trails on the site. So the applicant is proposing to provide the off-road trail identified by the comp plan that runs along the west side of Rush Creek. The Parks Commission did recommend that this be a wood chip or a moan trail since the vast majority of it is in the flood plain and would likely be seasonally flooded, so a paved or permanent trail would not be appropriate. And they did recommend that the trail is meant to be connected to County Road 19 along the southern boundary consistent with staff's recommendation. They did recommend additional connection along the northernmost portion of the property where it abuts County Road 19, so not all the way up to County Road 10, but on County Road 19 just south of that. Staff is recommending that that be done when the plat to the, or the outlot be platted as the alignment for that trail would likely change depending on the lot layout for those four development rights. And that no credit would be given for any part of that trail easement that's in the flood plain, so they would only get a small piece of park dedication for that. So the Parks Commission did recommend accepting the trail easement and cash and lieu for remainder. All of the cash and lieu amount would be determined at final plat based on the final alignment of the trail and how much acreage they would actually get credit for. The variance to a reduced minimum lot depth for Lot 1. Lot depth is defined as the mean horizontal distance between the front lot line and the rear lot line of a lot. Given the shape of Lot 1, which I'm just going to throw up really quick, is this lot over here. Lot depth would be measured from the road here on this west side to the property boundary on this east side. And given the shape of the lot that, with a mean lot depth, it doesn't meet the lot depth definition. Let's go back to the, um, that it doesn't meet that minimum lot depth. And given the proximity of Rush Creek makes it challenging to make substantial changes to the road, to push it to the west to allow for more lot depth or to swing the road around, just, it's challenging with all the site constraints. So staff felt that there was merit to a variance, and so there is criteria. The applicant did respond to the variance criteria, and staff did provide their input on those findings for the variance. And the two routes on that variance would be, if the planning commission feels that the criteria have been met, they would move forward with the plat as drafted. If they were not met, it could stand alone and be denied separate from the preliminary plat, and then they would have to revise the plat to comply with all zoning standards. And it would be a revision to the plat, but it could be two separate independent actions or one joint action depending on the way the commission feels. And so this is a public hearing for the preliminary plat and the application as a whole because of the preliminary plat. And so staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat and the variance, but if the planning commission, as I said, finds that the variance standards have not been met, they may recommend denial for that. And it could, the preliminary plat would be separate then from that motion.
Okay.
So if there's any questions for staff, and I believe the applicant is also on the, virtually present.
Okay. Great. Thank you. At this point, we'll open up the meeting for the public hearing. Is there anybody in the crowd that would like to address the commission? You people have not been sitting here all this long, just to?
Not to say anything.
You find us entertaining. Are you not here for this one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They are.
All right. All right. Would you like to?
I'm Deb Wyman. I live at 22945 County Road 10. So I'm, I'm right, I'm the, on the other side of the market. So, and I'm also involved with the Burschel School that's right at the corner. And so when I looked, right where they have a property line at the Burschel School, so the first thing I noticed was that the first big tree on the Burschel, or the Burschel property is on their line. Well, all the trees, are they going to take out the whole line fence of trees?
Okay. Maybe if you could just, here, just point it out to me, where is this tree? What line of trees are you talking about?
Well, here's the Burschel School, and this is all trees all the way down.
All right. And you're talking the first row tree here? Or this whole row?
Well, that's right. That's the whole thing, yeah. So that's my property.
Okay. Well, I have the same question.
Mr. Chair, the applicant, once we're ready to have him call in, says he can comment on that. I don't know if we want to have him call in now or if we want to wait until the end for all the questions?
Why don't we, I was going to ask the same question. So we'll get you an answer here.
Okay.
But please continue.
And then, well, when I was, when I went back to my, so it's the property, it's the corner, it's the southeast corner of the Relqui Farm. They have the, there's a low spot, it's swamp, it's my pond, there's a creek that goes through, and then they have it, it's all flagged off around it, and they have a flag on my property, on my side of the creek. And I think, according to what I'm looking at, where that, that first, that first lot, number one, is back by there. So are they going to have a lot of elevation to like this lot, these lots two and one and two? Are they going to bring in a lot of fill? And that's going to affect the drainage for my farm? And that's gonna affect the drainage from my pond if they are?
Okay.
And there were a couple people here, neighbors, that live directly across from the Rocky Farm, and they, we wanna know where, they wanted to know where the, the road is gonna be, for that Chaparral Drive, that access, that access is all the lot, up on County Road 10.
They're concerned that headlights hit in front of their house.
Right.
Five had conversations with that. My back pocket, too.
Mr. Chair, do you want city staff to respond to those, or do you wanna wait till you take all the comments?
Take all the comments, and then, that's the way we've traditionally done it.
Okay.
Is, is that it?
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak?
Okay.
Just for our members of the public on Zoom, just to get us started, when you, if you would like to speak on this item for the public hearing, please press star nine for your phone. Otherwise, if you're on a tablet or computer, please raise your hand. This is accessible via the reactions tab at the, on a computer, at least, at the bottom of your screen. And at this time, no one's raising their hand, but the applicant has indicated wanting to speak, and like I said, he probably can answer a few questions as well, so he's ready to call in once we give him the go-ahead.
Well, by all means, bring him in. Yes, please.
All right. Do you wanna close the public hearing and have him call, or do we want to keep it open?
Um, no, at this point, he's part of the public hearing.
Nate, is that you?
Yes.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, commissioners and staff. There's a, there was a question about the tree line. We actually made the determination to pull the road back from the, from the property in order to avoid touching that tree line. So I didn't know if there was a specific tree that was in question, but, you know, that's a very old tree line, you know, with the way that's been farmed. And it is our intention and it is our, at least our measurements are showing that because we pulled that tree line, or, I mean, sorry, the, the road shifted it to the west, that none of those trees would be affected. So that's, that's one thing. And then, thank you, Kevin, from Landform, for walking through the Lot 1. We actually looked at another way to meet all the requirements on Lot 1, and what would have been required is to have quite an awkward, almost square-shaped bend in the road. And that, by bending that road into kind of a, I guess you could say, a horseshoe shape at the very end, we could have met the requirements. But the reality is, it just seemed like the more graceful curve that is pictured in front of you, which necessitates a variance is probably appreciated by snowplowing staff and maybe just makes sense for a lot of reasons. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
Okay. That's good. So can I ask you a question while you're online?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So when I was out there the other day, I must have missed you. I, I stopped out just to take a look at things, and I gotta be honest, I was gonna go home and get on Google Earth to measure it, because I was, I must have been standing out there on like Lot 8, you know? I walked by your dogs, nice dogs. And I went out there, and I started looking at this thing, and when you look to the east and you see that tree line, right? And then you look to the west, down to where, you know, where the, the crick is gonna be or the crick is? So it says 879 feet, just as, as one of the lines, as an example.
Yeah.
And I really seriously, I was like, there's no way that is only 875 feet. I think that was like a mile. I, I was like, that, that has to be par five. Are these measurements correct? It's, they're only 800, 700, 600 feet deep from that road, all the way to the crick? I'm gonna assume they are. I just, I just wondered if I'm...
I can assure you, you're very accurate.
Am I, am I missing something?
I guess distances can be deceiving. You know, this isn't like the previous discussions where we're talking 75 foot, you know? So, yeah, no, I, I can assure you, they're quite accurate.
Okay. All right. I'll have another question for you later in our discussion, so I'll, let's just, was there anything else you, you wanted to address? Otherwise, otherwise, if you hold...
Thanks for the consideration.
The flag?
Yeah, the flag on my property. Oh, Nate, are you still there?
Yeah.
There was a flag on a neighboring property. Do you know, do you know what was going on there?
A flag on a neighboring property? I'm, I mean, I actually, I am not on-site there. The only thing I can imagine is that, that sounds like, unfortunately, my surveyors and wetland delineation folks have been out there, but there's nothing to prevent like neighbor kids from, unfortunately, pulling up my, my flags or moving them around, so I can only assume. I mean, I mean, there, there certainly wouldn't have been something placed on a neighboring property from, from my side or from any of my professional staff.
Okay. Wait, are we talking about like a surveyor's flag, or are you talking about an American flagpole, or?
You know, those little pink.
Okay. So a utility flag?
Yeah, and maybe that it's noting where it crosses the boundary possibly with the wetland delineation, so my...
I mean...
Why would that be on my property?
Well, if it, because if it shares, it, my understanding, it could probably have engineering speak to it, but I believe what they have to do is they have to mark the entire wetland. So if it's, if there's a wetland on one of those lots, they're gonna have, they have to basically understand where that whole, the extent of that wetland is. So I believe that's probably what's going on, and we can probably have someone from StanTech give you a call if you'd like to leave your contact information.
Right. Because you're saying more than likely that what, your, that part of your property is probably part of the wetland, is what you're saying?
Yes. I believe that's what's going on.
So they just marked everything?
Have they come out and staked the property line? Do you have any?
Yeah.
Do you have any?
They have a stake, I saw the stake in the southeast corner, and they've got the northeast corner, too. Down by the Burschville School is also staked.
And everything looks to be correct?
I don't know. I'll have to get a surveyor out there.
Okay.
She, she also had a question about if they need to run off the wetland and stuff.
And that would be for this corner down here, right? Down by lots one and two?
Are you able to speak to the drainage on lots one, two? Nate, lots one and two, Nate?
Well, yeah, just to say that, at this point, I believe the conditions require a full stormwater plan. I believe it has to pass the Army Corps of Engineers and possibly some additional agencies as well. So while we don't have a fully fleshed-out stormwater plan, certainly the intention of the plan is to pump properly direct water and, you know, not create, I mean, there wouldn't be erosion or any other water drainage issues allowed. So I guess the short answer is no, but I know we have to draft a full stormwater plan as part of our, our process.
Was one of your questions whether or not he plans to fill those wetlands?
No, it was the elevation of the lot.
Okay. Did you answer your question?
He never admitted there was anything.
So I think part of her question was whether or not the elevations would be increased on those lots. Is that your intent at this time, or is that what's being looked at?
Oh, yeah. Now I see the question. No, we are not proposing any elevation changes. That, I guess I couldn't necessarily speak to the, the future homeowner, if they would, you know, I guess, what, build up a foundation or, you know, I couldn't speak to the ultimate level of the home, because that's not, that's not, I'm not constructing a home on the site, and I think that would be handled at the, at the time of the building permit.
And then the road that's gonna come into the property, where is that road gonna be? Off of County Road 10 that's gonna go onto Chaparral, where is that Chaparral gonna be?
It's...
Right next to the tree line, so...
Right next to the tree line.
Well, he said he's not gonna go next to the tree line.
He's not taking the trees out, but right next to it. Well, that's what I heard.
I can use that if I find it to mention here.
How many feet did they move it over from the property line? Of course, I would think it would be...
It's not scaled, and I don't have a scale.
I mean, you can't put a driveway right on the property line. I wouldn't think you'd be able to put a road. I mean, I know a driveway's supposed to be at least five feet.
To answer your question, Mr. Chair, the rightaway's 75 feet, and I don't have a scale to tell you exactly how far the street is from the rightaway edge, but it's pushed over towards the west boundary line, and given the street width, it's likely between 20 and 25 feet from the property line.
Okay. Can, Mr. Karanimi?
Yes.
Your, you use Otto Brothers, Otto Associates. Do you know if they're coming out any time in the future?
Yeah, they, they would, yeah, a part of our, our process would be to re-stake all of these boundaries. Was there something that, to be clarified?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, because I, I too did, I was a little, I mean, when I walked it, I, of course, I wasn't gonna walk all the way to the south. I just went to Lot 8. But I mean, there, there wasn't a lot of staking out there that I might traditionally expect to see. And so it was really kind of hard to, you know, get a full grasp, even though this is very simple. But if she's requesting, you know, to see exactly where the road is, maybe next time they're out there, they could stake, you know, where that, you know, where the, the mouth of Chaparral Drive or Lane would be?
Yeah, that, that, I would add that the only reason, so we actually had soil tests completed and a lot of the staking was, was completed, but unfortunately, the farmer had a lease, so there was a lease that had been grandfathered in to plant in that field last year. So I had to remove all of the survey stakes. So, so, yeah, we've, we've already made all these measurements, and what we'll do, because that's not being farmed with us here, is we'll actually plant a cover crop out there, and then we'll replace all of the stakes, including the ones that will show where the road accesses. So, yes, we will have all that available.
Will that help?
Just on that road, the neighbor that was here has a concern. I've spoke to them in the past, that where that road comes out, it will shine directly into their front yard, their front, in the front of their house. So I don't know what can be done to help that neighbor, but that would be a concern once it comes in front of the council. It will, it'll align, it'll be shining right in the front, front windows, front door.
You know, Dean, the only thing I can say, I, you know, as a member, as a guy who's looking, you know, for retirement housing, there was a house we were looking at up north, and it, right at the dead end of a cul-de-sac. And, and I looked at my wife, and I said, nope. If there's one thing I've learned, you do not buy the house at the dead end of a cul-de-sac. I, I turned my lights off in my cul-de-sac for, you know, Charlie's place. Because I, I just know that it can be, but there's nothing, you know, but what do you, what do you...
The neighbor across the street...
I mean, aside from, aside from doing plantings, but, you know, we've talked about doing, you know, doing some screening on other property, you know? It's not part of the development. And I think the lawyers have said, yeah, you don't wanna do that. So I mean, short of moving the road to gap it somewhere, I suppose that's possible, but I guess that would have to be something that would have to be designed through staff interaction with Otto.
My, my solution, if they, when it comes in front of the council, is towards the end of the road where it comes to 10, turn it to the west and then plant on that corner some more, can I say it, light-blocking rubbery and stuff, so when the cars are coming down, it's not shining at that house. And when they go to get out onto 10, they're making a slight turn to the left, but again, you're back into square enough to 10 and see traffic both ways. It's a concern of those...
Well, I mean, yeah. And, and I, I certainly can legitimize those concerns, but I just, is, is it too late in the process here to make those kinds of changes? Staff, you got a, you got a recommendation here?
Mr. Chair, this is preliminary plat, so this would be where we'd look at doing those changes. As far as Mr. Varancamp's point about turning the angle, because this is a county road, all access is permitted through the county in terms of where the access happens, along with if we were to come at something other than a 90-degree angle to the road, there are limitations as to how angled you can come in, you know, degree-wise. I don't know those off the top of my head, but I know there are restrictions. And then same thing, if you were to plant, you know, bushes or buffers, there is just a traffic site visibility component with that, that you have to limit the height on those, so it would just be finding the right balance between driver height and headlights.
Again, I just wanted to bring it up. That's what that neighbor was talking about or was concerned about, and now's the time to just bring it to everybody's attention and see what can be done.
Well, I mean, they certainly meet all the depth, right? Every single one of these lots, they meet all the minimum acreage, so even if you did kind of a, one of these things down here, you know, if it only needed to go 20, 30 feet, you know, I suppose it could be done, but can you, can you folks help facilitate that, then?
One second. Do we wanna close the public hearing?
Yes, I was about to say.
Pardon me. I'm sorry.
That's fine. But you can help facilitate that, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, staff could work to facilitate a realignment of the access into the property. That's the direction from planning and...
Can I add, can I add one more comment?
Sure.
The, the, and while I appreciate that, I didn't know that, that was a concern in the neighborhood, I will say that I've already done the access review with Jason Godfrey and Mike Olmstead with Hennepin County, who has to permit the access onto a county road. And they had recommended that particular access point as meeting public safety standards and also meeting distancing guidelines coming from the intersection. So I just, I just wanted to, you know, while I'm sympathetic to that point, I know there's, there's a balancing of, of multiple, you know, agencies, and that's where Hennepin County wanted to see that access come in.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other comments, sir?
Nate, did you have anything else you wanted to add, or was that it?
Oh, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna end the call right now, Nate, and then I'll let you know, we need you to call back in, okay?
Oh, sure. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion to end the public meeting?
Yes. Is there a second?
No, a second.
All right. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Public hearing is now closed. All right. Commission, discussion, and recommendation. Anybody have anything they'd like to lead off with? Yes, sir.
I think that this application should be approved for the variance for Lot 1. I appreciate staff catching this issue. I think that the requirements for granting a variance here have been met. I think the road placement and the stormwater pond are practical difficulties that could make a strict adherence to the average lot depth foolish and would result in undesired consequences. In reading the packet, it also seems that the stormwater pond is a condition that the landowner did not create, so I find that convincing. I think that strict... I think that strict compliance with the 300-foot average lot depth would result in undesired consequences. I will also vote to recommend approval on that second item. And Mr. Chair, I need to be at work at 7:30 tomorrow morning. So if there's anything I can do to kind of speed things along, I would be happy to.
Okay?
Thank you.
And I concur with his, I agree with both the variance and the, and the preliminary plat. From my perspective, I would recommend approval.
I would make, recommend approval as well.
Okay, I also think this is a great development. I agree with the variance. I, I did have just one question. There is quite a bit of enhanced wetland setback. What was the, what was the reason for that? The buffer zone, was that?
Mr. Chair, the, the buffer was added in order to meet all of the different overlays that are present on site with the shoreline and the flood plain and the wetland. It was easier to include a wetland buffer that is greater to encompass all of those within one buffer rather than have like a tiered buffer, you know, like three separate buffers. It's just one buffer all in the same area and you just extend the wetland by doing that.
Okay, all right. One other clarification. On page one, in the very first section, it says, create nine lots. Lot 10 should be platted as Outlot A. Outlot A will retain three development rights and may be planted in the future. You go to next page.
I can.
Preliminary plat, the site has 13 development rights. The applicant's proposal shows nine resident, with the four remaining development rights being assigned to Lot 10. So can you clarify for me, what, what is the?
Mr. Chair, there was an error in the first paragraph. It should say four. It is correctly referenced in the resolution and the following references to four development rights. But the first paragraph where it spelled out three should have been changed to four, to be correct.
Okay, and, you, you, down here then, it, lower in the page, the applicant has requested a variance for the lot depth requirement for Lot One, which is discussed later. And then it says Lot Two does not meet the lot width standard of 200 feet and a revised plat showing 200 feet of lot width must be submitted. But at the top, the plat shows compliance with all RR, with the RR for all lots except one. Is Lot Two not in compliance in one facet or another?
Mr. Chair, Lot Two is not in compliance as current, but the staff conditions address the non-compliance so that all the lots would be in compliance at time of approval. However, Lot One would not be because of the variance and that variance, that's where the variance approval is needed.
Okay, great, all right. Any further questions or discussion? All right, is there a motion? Let's see, we have, well, we have the approval, approving preliminary plat. And that is, that's it, right? Just one resolution?
I believe it's handled in just, yeah.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. It's one resolution handling the variance and the preliminary plat.
Okay, and there are no changes? Is there a motion to approve this preliminary plat and variance?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Thank you. All right, item D, public hearing for the Ditser Garage Conditional Use Permit at 9320 Cherry Lane. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, may I suggest that we've read this and I would suggest that we skip the reading.
I agree.
In this particular case, I'll agree with you. Thank you.
All right. Let's open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to address the commission on this issue?
All right.
Hello, Commissioners, Benjamin Ditser.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Ditser.
9320 Cherry Lane. I am also the applicant or the owner of the home, future garage owner. I appreciate your consideration. I only have, I have one request that I noticed in the packet and it is the condition to move the canopied structure. I've brought with me a couple of pictures of the structure so I can show you what it looks like.
I have a picture as well.
Well, they were in our packet.
Okay, the picture, so not the garage structure, but did you include a picture of the?
The slanted roof higher in the front?
No, sorry.
No, it's a different picture, but I can, I can put it on the TV for you.
Yeah, put it on the TV. There was a condition in there that is requesting me to.
Oh, that this be moved?
Correct. And I just.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull screen it.
Yep, that's fine.
Let me, let me interrupt you.
Yeah.
Is there any commissioners that feel that the applicant should be required to move that structure?
Does it sit somewhere?
It's, it's 100% within the property line. It's just close to the side property line.
Yes, so this prop, it's 1.8 feet of the property line and structures are supposed to be 20 feet, accessory structures are supposed to be 20 feet from the property line. So one option for the commission would be if we don't want to require him to move it, then we would need to require a variance. So we could require a variance upon approval.
It's, the property line is somewhere over there?
Yeah, it's one, it, the back.
Be the back right corner.
Yeah, the back right corner is 1.8 feet away from the property line.
The lot line, if you can see on the survey, is very irregular.
I apologize for interrupting you, but it is an open hearing and you have the floor, so please continue.
No problem. The lot line is just irregular and so at that point, it comes from the right side of your screen and jogs across the marsh. So on that point in particular, it's pretty close. I was not the original designer or installer of this structure. It was an inherited feature that I enjoy, actually. So I'm just respectfully asking if you would consider, I don't know what the variance process is, but I guess that's what it would be, a variance request.
Yeah, so we could just delay things a little bit, but we could definitely do that if the commission would prefer that as a condition of approval. That is an option.
Otherwise, I'm just looking to build a nice garage with no living quarters, only cars.
Sir, before you let you go, do you want to speak to the staff recommendation to move your, your building so that you're?
Oh, yes, yeah, I have no problem moving the building or building and retaining one. Either one works. I think we have enough room on the lot to move the garage away so we achieve the four to one. I think it's just a matter of measuring the grading and my contractor was here, but he couldn't last through the marathon.
Fair enough.
So, yeah, I don't have an issue with that part of it.
That makes two of us.
Yes, yes. I should have brought popcorn tonight.
All right, anything else?
That's it, appreciate you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody online?
Members of the public online, if you'd like to speak on this item for the public hearing, it is the Garage CUP for Increased Sidewall Height. Please press star nine if you're on your phone. Otherwise, raise your hand via the reactions tab on other devices. And Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone raising their hand at this point.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to end the public meeting.
I will second that.
All right, all those in favor of ending the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Comments, discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question and it's just about the issue that's brought up. So it requires us, staff, the decision today requires us to make a decision about the access restructure.
Yes, so Planning Commission, basically the issue is as part of the CUP, the site needs to be in compliance and that structure does not predate our zoning code, so it's not a legal, non-conforming structure. So our options would be, basically if we, if you don't want, if you feel like you shouldn't have to move the structure because you believe a variance could be applied, then I would recommend changing, let me look at the, I'm looking, wrong report, I apologize.